What an ominous intro. Okay, uh, so continuing, ooh, continuing right where we left off. We are going to go straight to the Light World. And we're gonna explore around a little bit more. Bye, Ralcy. I'm loving like the character development that we're already getting in this chapter. Door's locked. Oh, oh yeah, this room's clean. Managed to cram everything in the closet, even the rug. We should've taken the rug with us. Uh, so we need to go, we still need to talk to Onion. And, oh, Napstabluk, what are you doing? I'm trying to direct traffic without Undine, but, oh no! Officer Undine, sorry, no one has seen her since last night. She wasn't at any of her usual places either. Seems strange to worry, given that she'll, she's usually invincible. But this job isn't the same without her smile. Aww! No cops, no speed limit, I can go as slow as I want! Shelter? The shelter? Right, Undine had been in charge of something about that. An important code or something? It was the only thing that ever made her nervous. I never saw it though, I don't think she's even in this, or I don't think it's even in the station. Yesterday's police tape. Police station is closed, please don't do many big crimes right now. Okay, up here. Hi Sands, I'll get back to you. Is it this way? Oh, hi, Alphys.
Chris, I, um, you know that daily saucer of milk I put out? I, I have regrets. What do I do with my leftover milk? Just look at it?
Oh. Don't drag me into this, I'm just looking at milk. You're dragging me into it, stop!
OMG Chrissy, do you like want some of my free milk?
That's my free milk, you furry freak!
Like, don't be shy, it's my milk and I love sharing!
I'll bury you into the goddamn, or I'll bury you, you goddamn milk pirate! Well. Knock, knock, knock. The door-knocking guy? No, this is his wife. Please take a break from knocking today, thanks. Taking breaks is vital to getting better too. Hey, human, doesn't monsters scare you? Like, if that girl bited you? Nah, Chris, Chris has got nothing to worry about. I only like to eat little rabbits. Mom! Knock, knock, knock. Nothing. Where's Onion? I forget where that lake is. Did I miss it? Is it further south? You hear nary a bone, no rattle, nor trowzel, nor xylophone tickle, that's really sad. So, uh, can we go into the store? Sorry, kid, check the sign. Open. Yeah, we, we checked the sign, it says open. Aw, man, thanks for checking that, that's wrong! Then change your stupid sign! Alright, I'm on it, one changed sign coming up! Open. I don't see you changing your sign. Got it, come back in a bit. Open. Oh, there's a save point here. You barely see it, a patch of sunlight that shouldn't be there. Felt different in your hand, and you knew that, or, and you knew what it was. Yeah, I think... So originally, you're, you weren't supposed to be able to save in the Light World, but I think Toby realized that this chapter would be painful if you couldn't. Because, from what I know, this is going to be a mostly Light World chapter. Uh, last chapter was all Dark World, this might be all Light World. And like, there are save points in the Dark World back at the school, but... I think this is more of a game design thing, that they kinda had to, um... What's the word? Compromise with. Hey, everybody. Aw, Chrissy, are you here to buy me a free lunch? Talk about petty. Like that cat girl? Good gators, she is obsessed with me! This morning, we accidentally ordered the same special! We had to like, ugh, share and like, talk and laugh? And then she had the nerve to like, ugh, pay for it? No way! Like, I want, like, I want your hairy charity! So I'm just like, waiting, you know, in case she comes by, so I can pay her. By the way, is my makeup okay? I mean, I need to look better than her, obviously. God, so obsessed with me! Just admit your friends already! Um, how long should I do this for? And is it really, I mean, think of like, the goods of society, right? Like, he was always ogling girls like me and stuff? Now he can be a good little boy and ogle at a JPG? See, everyone wins, especially us, because it's really funny! Well, I guess it won't hurt to, um, if it makes him happy, too. Boo, bet Azzy would've. Wait. Taking someone. Oh my god, are you catfishing pizza pants? Fly in soup. That guy took a fistful of butterflies from his pouch? And put them in my bowl? It was nice of him, but I didn't ask. Notice anything different about me? Now that I think about it, I never noticed anything about you either. Here after church, hon? That's nostalgic. Let me guess, the usual special, it'll be five dollars. Sure. Hmm, looks like you don't have enough. Aww, I'm sure you have some money at home! Hot chocolate, it's too hot to drink. Gar, or Garsong, Garkon? Some mineral water, please? And hold the water. Working here all day just makes me hungry af, or hungry for diner food. Good thing the new guy's letting me take a break. How did this guy get fired at the pizza place? Grease me up, chief! Come to think of it, did we hire a new guy? Oh my god. Icy's Pizza is closed for new signage. Here at Icy's Pizza, your family is going to love it. Temporary pizza stand, sign is closed for repairs. Store. Hello, buddy, my date's about to start, and it is in the bag! Ten dollar flowers, heart-shaped pizza, and my secret weapon? The old duct-taped suit I made for prom. Little buddy, it's a first date, you say? I'm overdoing it, you say? But PizzaRina, I want to show her that I'm serious, that I, I love her! And she may be a little late to our date, but, I mean... Look at these memes! A frog riding a bicycle? If she's breaking out the vintage like this? She's gotta be making out with me in her mind, little buddy! Whoops, another new text? Sorry, little buddy, I'll talk later. Yeah, it would be weird if you were here. Okay, well... Have fun. I think, yeah, it's... Hey, don't mind me, just fixing this grill. Want a hot dog? Heck yeah! Wait, isn't that a cat tail? It's low-calorie stuff, so you won't feel grill-ty. It's inedible. We call that zero-caloriesmas! It's an upgraded grill, now in addition to cat food, it can also smell like dog food. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go over here first. I want to talk to Onion. But just wait here, right? Looks like your weird friend is busy today. Let's go already. Aww! I wanna talk to Onion! Okay. French fry, ooh, on the frickin' ground! Am I gonna eat it? No, it's old and brown. Don't make me repeat myself. Alright, Chris, you handle the driving, I'll be the turret. You know, I'll be standing in the back, throwing dirt and stuff. Hey, what's with the door at the back of the shop? Yeah? The back door is blocked, you can only see through the basement window. A cork board is covered with tons of papers, and documents litter the floor. Oh. Is Azrael still secretly trying to solve Des's case? That Asgore guy, it's a shame he lost everything after he, you know? Now he has to sell flowers to make ends meet, but... What? He's your father! Sorry! Well, I hope for your sake he quits being so obsessed with that stuff. Closed! Knock, knock, knock. Ah, whatever am I to do, this boredom, this ennui? Oh my, is that you again, darling? My only fan? Oh, that's right! You were looking for entertainment! What? You want to give me your TV? I, I don't understand, is there some kind of catch? Eh, it's scuffed, it's old, and the colors are kinda messed up? But it's, uh, really good, it's a really good TV. I see. Could you bring it on by? Uh, yeah, of course, wait a sec. Oh my, it's a handsome little thing, isn't it? What's the brand? Eh, I don't know, but his name's Tenna. Your TV has a name? No, I mean, uh, yeah, but just like a nickname? Like Antenna? How cute, I'll take it. Really? Hell yeah, Chris, we found him home! Oh my, you two really love this TV, don't you? Well, don't worry. I have a strange feeling Mr. Tenna and I are going to get along famously. Cool, well, I'm putting it in your house now. Yay! Knock, knock, knock. Tenna, you cad, what is this salacious music video? Oh my, I think something just awakened in me. Oh no, well... Have fun, Mediton, or whatever your name is on this timeline. You hear a hissing sound, investigate further? Investigate. Peering into the dark, it appears that the yellow circles in the windows are, were just fresh doughnuts? And the hissing was the fryer. Some kind of scratching noise coming from inside. Okay. Various cat-themed junk is piled up inside the house. Seems to be a bit of a cat sty. It's a locked cat flap, upon further inspection, it seems it requires three codes. This information is useless. Uh, ooh, nope, hold on, alright, we made it! Now where the hell's Noel? Ugh, I'm getting hungry waiting around. Chris, got any snacks? That works, I guess. Uh-oh.
Suzie, Chris, hi! Sorry I'm late, I just had to...
Yeah?
Um, is that a rose?
This? Oh, oh yeah, sorry. Yum. Ah, shoot, did you want some? I can pick up the stem if you...
No, it's fine, this way! What, 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 what?
Okay, whatever. Oh boy. Think your mom'd mind if we raced in her street van? Well, maybe your tires need some air first. I didn't do it. Hattory.
There you two are, I hope you have been... Where are your church clothes?
Eh, you know, we, we just kinda...
Chris, Suzie is the guest, make an excuse for her.
I ate the clothes.
That's not helping, dumbass! Chris, do not be a bad influence on Suzie.
Uh-oh. So leave your phone, blah, blah, blah.
By the way, I'm leaving for church, I am leaving for choir practice in a little while. If you need anything, just come by the church, okay, honey?
Okay. Uh, well, I'm gonna look for those five dollars. Cover pizza-themed deodorant. The apple-smelling kid and their pizza stank brother. Reminds me when I flushed down a bath bomb and... Huh?
Chris, you did that too? What? You did it at home?
Dumbass, I did that at school! Apple-scented shampoo seems to be lighter than normal. Okay, still no hard evidence I drank that. Apple shampoo, there are bite marks around the screw cap. Look, I thought it was like a soda cap! Money? No time to rebrand him, unimportant text. No, there's always time for that. It's a cactus, it loves you, but mainly shows a sharp side. The most sundray of plants. If only there were a word for that kind of personality. Uh, if you are intimately familiar with all the flavor texts, then Undertale. Over the drawer that contains how to draw dragons. Whoa, what the heck is... You shut the drawer as fast as humanly possible. Chris, hey, Chris, can we see that again, Chris? Ew. It's hard to put into words, but for some reason, seeing Suzie next to you? You felt like, whatever you were, for just right now? It might be okay. Door's locked. Hey, a save point! There's five dollars on your brother's drawer, take it? Yes. You reluctantly borrowed five dollars. Nice of your brother to treat us to the diner. Hey, the hell does your brother have all the prizes? Wait a sec. Huh? Aww! There you go, the Suzie prize for having me over at your house! Hell yeah! Hey, didn't know you owned a bird or a something. Don't really like you hat, or, don't really like how you nodded at, or something. What is this computer wallpaper? What age did you and your brother draw this at? Glad we didn't go to this cyber world! What the hell? Hey, in the corner, that's the cat thing from Castle Town! You know, the sham thing, the cat, the stitch thing, or whatever. Oh sham? Ew. Can we like toss some of your brother's CDs? No, I mean like a frisbee, for fun, come on! Yeah, yeah, we could do that. You've already taken enough. Okay. Those roar. Can't get to the window. I'm with you in the dark. Don't forget, I'm with you in the dark. Okay. Not this way yet. Gotta go buy the thing. Hello! Here after church? Yep, yep, yep. Yes. Alright then, hon, you two sit wherever you like. A diner, huh? I haven't eaten here since your mom took me. I remember plowing into my food with my runny nose. Probably came into every, probably became every janitor's enemy after that. But, it's funny. Even though I was only making a mess? Her face looked so happy. Just sitting there, smiling, watching me. Kinda like you're doing now. Jeez. Chris? Anyone tell you your family's goddamn weird? Here you go! And here's a little something extra for your friend. Aww! Huh? If you need anything else, just holler. Alright, Chris, don't hold anything back. Want the last bite of my sundae? Too slow! So I guess we should get going, huh? Huh? What are you doing? Breathing on the window. Draw. Is that me? Not bad, you know? Here, let me draw something. It's you. What do you think? Looks bad, chief! No, it's good. What can I say, I'm an artist. Even got your ear in there. One of them. Whatever. Look, I made you talk! Suzie rules! Make Suzie drawing talk? What are you? I wouldn't say that! What did we write? And then the rain fell down and... Washed everything away. Write something in the corner? Huh? Are you writing something? Chris? You never tell when you're messing around. Well, let's get out of here. You mind cleaning your, cleaning your place up a little bit first, hon? Huh? Oh, uh, yeah, sure. There we go. Alright, let's go. That was adorable! This chapter is adorable, I, I really needed this after the intensity of the end of last chapter. Clopen. Clopen. So, can we go in yet? Hmm, what does the sign say? It says clopen. The hell's that mean? Beats me, I just work here. We'll change it again! Alright, you're the boss! I don't see you changing your sign. Got it, come back in a bit. Very good. What the heck does that sign mean? Hmm, seems to indicate some kind of sands, sands. So does it say the door's open or closed? Guess it just means there's a skeleton in front of the door. But the door's locked, right? It's closed. Locked? Nah, it's been unlocked this whole time. So is it open? Or so it is open? Nah, no one's in there, but it's not closed. It's an in-between store, like, hmm, or in-between state? Like, hmm. Like clopen. Hmm, kinda makes you wish we had a sign for that. Chris, we're done with this guy. Oh, no we're not! Okay, fine. Okay, is there anything else? I don't know if there's anything else. Alright Sands, goodbye. Yeah, I think we're done here. I think it's time to progress the plot, finally. Twenty-seven minutes in! Ooh, wow! Alright, ready to explore your house now. Um, great! So, um, where did you two go? Oh, eh... Chris took me out to lunch at the diner, it was awesome! Kinda feel like we got a little closer, you know? Oh, I'm glad you got closer? While I was waiting? Uh-oh, sorry. Yeah, me too. We, um, hmm. Well, anyways, this is my house! Wow. The hell, it's huge! I'm already getting lost just standing here. Oh, really? Then, um, here, I'll show you around. You've all joined your study group. Just keep looking around. Okay, there's nothing to interact with here. Welcome to my ho-ho home! Chris, let's start searching. Um, okay, let's meet at the couch when you're done searching! What the heck is this? My mom collects them. Okay, how do you, how the hell do you turn it off? Um, just hold down the button. Though for some weird reason, turning it off takes power? So it takes forever on the low-battery ones. Well, this is cute. What the heck is this? It's a holiday treat catcher, you know? Anyone wanna tell me it's normal to have one? Nobody! Thermostat, the only option is cold. Start the study, oh, no, 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 no! So, um, this is the snack tray? Why, Noel? Why did you slice the cheese into hearts? I don't remember if you ate the wooden stick things. Can't go down there? Can't go down there? There's another one here. There wouldn't be some of these Santas with dead batteries? If Chris hadn't loose-
If Chris hadn't lose the cases shut trying to starve them.
Why is there so much bottled water in here?
Um, it's just convenient, you know?
Wait until she learns about the free water from the sink. Oh, hey. It's an empty gift box. Empty gift box. Oh, there's something back there.
Um, Chris, do you need to check all of these?
Yes. I mean, gotta admit, this room is kinda sus. Especially that vent.
Nice reference, Suzie.
Uh, reference? I'll stop talking now. It's empty gift box. Empty gift box. Okay, well, we're gonna be venting later. Kitchen? Piano? Whoa, you play piano?
Um, no, we just kinda have one. No one really plays it anymore.
Oh. Des definitely played that piano. Highly climbable looking tree. Why is there a sword up here? Anyone gonna say anything about the giant sword?
Oh, it's just my mom's katana, why does she have a katana? Normal knives aren't enough for dad's fruitcake.
Sink is sparkling clean. Fridge is packed with festive foods and a jar of pickles. In the cupboard are cutters for gingerbread monsters. Okay. Up here? What's with the ninja shurikens?
Those are snowflakes, Suzie. We made them from paper in Toriel's class a long time ago.
Then why are they metal?
Oh. My mom had them bronzed.
Bedroom? It's a Christmas cactus, you remember it's named Christmas.
Um, this cactus? Birdly calls it zoonzoon.
It's a cactus that apparently got poorly renamed at some point. State-of-the-art, high-definition TV with old game consoles under it. Why do you have a flat screen in here?
Oh, um, yeah, Birdly keeps saying I should get a CRT.
Uh, too late, we already gave ours away. She's not looking, Chris, it's half her computer for clues. She, yeah, she genuinely is not looking. Alright, Chris, quick, or click quietly, we are ninjas right now. My favorites paranormal crime supernatural, or paranormal. Oh, hell, the freaking skateboard game, hell yeah, woo!
What are you two doing?
Uh, shit, nothing. Upgrading your computer. You set her browser homepage to the skateboard game. Cat putters? The hell do you have this?
Um, exche, excuse me? It's great! But, like, a pet raising game, but, like, there's this some awesome bug that lets you get glitchy pets. I have a save file with like, seven headless cats.
Whoa, wait, can we see?
Um, after our project?
Snowwell's bed, under it is a metal CD with a photo of Noel in dark makeup. Whoa, what the hell is this?
Um, Catty wanted a custom cover for her mix CD, so...
It's cool. You should, uh, do this look more. Oh, she's into it!
If you can get my mom to let me go grimdark?
Snowwell's bed, yeah. The couch, for watching the TV. It's Noel's homework desk, you took a pencil out of habit. It's Noel's homework desk. Great hiding place, although it smells like detergent and deer. What are these little, uh, wings in here?
Um, oh! Those, I've had those since I was a little kid. They're from when I was the angel in the holiday pageant. But I liked them so much, I just kept wearing them.
Worn out and tattered. Aw. Hey, what's in here? Looks suspicious.
Um, sorry, guests aren't allowed in there.
Cool, sounds suspicious.
It's just my sister's room, but...
Aw. It's a tree that would potentially fall down if you climbed it. Chris is staring, or staring super intense, this has gotta be it. Sorry Noel, but we, we gotta go in here. To, to the bathroom?
Damn it, Chris! My mom just collects heart pillows for some reason. When Chris was little, they'd take one of these and pretend to rip out their heart and chase me. My mom just loves red heart-shaped objects?
Yep, it's locked alright. Noel, you give it a shot.
Um, okay. Why are we trying to open my parents' room?
You and Suzie continue to try to open the locked door in front of Noel. Okay. Well... We're not acting suspicious. Not at all! Let's this way. Nothing, the house's back door, no need to leave. Not yet. Alright, let's start the study session.
Okay, should we, um, get started?
Oh, uh, yeah, sure.
Um, so, what are your projects about?
Oh, well, uh... We'll never know what this project is about.
Sorry, um, phone call, it'll be just a sec. Hi, Birdly, what's up? Um, uh, sure, of course I'm alone. Um, sure, I bet you do look quite servine, or I bet I do look quite servine this evening. If it's about the notes, I already highlighted them for you, so... What? You want me to go on a date to the festival? With you? Um, I mean, sure, I, I, I'd be glad to... Be your player two.
She's not going to the festival with you dumbass!
Suzie?
Look, you don't really wanna go with him, right? Some people aren't gonna get it till you scream "no". Did you forget that or something?
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're right. I shouldn't be afraid to tell Birdly how I really feel. Next time I should be honest. Next time I should, I, I should shake his neck and scream at him like I did that one time! Uh, I mean, so, uh... Where did you throw my phone anyway?
Chris, I'll keep her busy, you go look for clues. It's Noel's phone. You can still hear a voice on the other end. Answer it? Yes. You can still hear Birdly distantly talking to himself.
Oh, sweet rotisserie Santa, the nightmare is become real. Suzie hurting Noel just to stop me from going with her. She's, she's gone yonder for me! Oh heavens to yikes, where's my dragon blazer, dragon blazer's barf bag? But, now that I think about it, she must be very lonely. The poor girl with no one to show her exclusive tips and tricks. Hello? Are you still there? Listen, you disgust me to say this, but as an act of charity, I will let you be the breeze under my wings. You, me, festival.
Sing the wrong number song.
Chris, you, you scoundrel! Eavesdropping on my sweet cartilaginous inner thoughts.
Go ahead and taunt, Chris. I'm the one who Noel and Suzie are falling for dom, like dominoes for. And you know what that, or you know what dominoes means, right, Chris? You're next! Uh oh, click. It's Noel's phone. Don't worry, Noel's not finding her phone for a while. You make like a dog and find some clues, go.
Oh, um, Chris, this might take a while to find my phone. So, um, you don't have to wait around here. You know, you could, um, go in a different room?
Uh, well, obviously, they want me to go into the vent. It's a tree that would be potentially fall down if you climbed on it. Heart or human soul-shaped pillow, depending on your opinion. It's locked. Oh, we can go in? Oh, fuck yeah! It's a red guitar. It's a code taped to the inside, it says shelter. You leaned down to look inside the guitar. You began to read the numbers on the passcode. One, two... Two. Where are we going, Chris? What's your plan? Uh oh. Are we going in the box? We're going in the box. Okay, well... I didn't think that was going to specifically send me into plot mode. I wanted to look around more. The code's 1225, we know that, right? Oh. Oh, I can just move around. You didn't put a lid on the box, dumbass! Okay. Well, this is interesting. Guess you could say that we're... being a little sus. I saw the soul vent. I would love to know what Chris is up to. Hey you. Dark Fountain, next. Suzie must not get guitar. Need soul. Without soul, Chris will... Suzie, guitar, code, stop. Police, sacrifice, next week. Church, tonight. Chris, dark world, no soul, can't. I'm gonna look around a little bit more. Oh. Oh, it's chocolate milk, isn't it? Jackie Milk. They need sugar to sustain them if they don't have a soul. Hang on. Oh, I can't go that way. Meow. Meow. Asgore, what are you doing here? Dum de dum. Cleaning up sure works up an appetite. I wonder if the kitchen has any treats for me, uh oh. No, not now, I can't afford to take a break. Are you doing odd jobs for the holidays to get money? Now more than ever, I need to concentrate. To settle this once and for all. Gotta go look again. Where are you going? Are you also looking for the code? Are you also trying to get into the shelter? Okay, well, I'm gonna let you do your thing, Chris. Oh, this is a long way. Where are we? Ding. Ding. Oh, shut up. Ding. Oh, we're underneath the couch. So, uh...
Um, looks like it's just the two of us.
Damn, kinda awkward without Chris here.
Why do I wish Chris was here?
Oh, I could turn off the power if I wanted to. Maybe... Maybe I could bring up the dark world? You should. Just say it was a dream I had.
Do you hear something from the basement?
Damn, I hope it's not the severed hand.
Is that a Bloodcrusher 2 reference?
Huh? Dude, you actually know it?
Of course, it's like a super duper classic. One day, the protagonist wakes up without a hand.
Then like, they hear music playing in the basement. And when they go down, it starts attacking them and stuff.
Jesus, yeah, that was so freaky!
Dude, the lights! Did, like, the power go out?
Ah, Chris! We know it's you doing one of your stupid pranks! Let's go fix the breaker.
Okay, well... Sneaking around. Oops, the tree.
Um, sorry, dad didn't clean the basement this year. Anyways, the breaker's down here somewhere.
Suzie? Suzie? Suzie, it's me!
Oh my gosh, this just brushed up against my leg! What the hell is that? It's, it's an angel's doll! It, it was goddamn moving!
Okay, ready to kill, I got a cane. Okay, ready to kill. I got a cane. You? You're gonna be dead to death with a koki pan?
No, no, I'm just going to...
Huh? Dude, you got guts.
There's probably just like a mouse underneath it, right? It's nothing to be afraid of.
Damn. Dude, wait, wait a sec.
Huh?
Something else followed us from the basement.
Huh? What?
The severed hand!
Suzie, you meanie.
Gotcha. Okay, what do we do? Throw it out?
Um, let's think about it first. If it's a mouse, it could be cute as a pet.
Alright, and if it's a severed hand, I'll keep it as my pet.
Wait, let me raise it too.
Sure, we'll raise it together. These two are so fucking cute.
It's funny, I was so nervous earlier. I've never actually hung out with you, you know? But so far, it just kinda feels like, I don't even know why I was nervous. Just feels like I already know you.
Yeah, I, I, uh, feel the same. It's pretty cool, I guess.
It's just strange. It feels like, feels like you're the same as in my dream.
You're, was, what was your dream about me like?
Huh? Oh, I, um, uh... I mean, I think I have to, I have to go find, um, my old hamster cage.
Hey, wait, I wanna hear about your dream. Don't move a goddamn inch. Oh, I'm schmoovin'. I'm schmoovin' many inches. You can't stop me. I'm free. Free to do crime. Oh. Ding. Ding. Ding, ding. Asgore's gonna be in here. That's Des's room. I wanna look up here. Can I go in here? No. No. I just wanna look around before I, okay, whoops. Hold on. Yeah, I'm not gonna be able to go anything, anywhere. Other than up there. Whoops. Uh, I just somehow opened an Nvidia menu. I don't know how I did that. Ooh. Whoa. Hey, whoa. Whoa! Rude! Ding, ding. Shut up! Look at anything? Yeah. Hi, you. When did you get here?
Did you just hear that? It sounded like a guitar.
Huh? It's probably Chris, like the other stuff. Ah, hell dude, it's gone! The angel fell over! That thing could be anywhere!
It had to have been coming from, um, in here, but...
Hey, let's go.
Hmm, it's quiet.
Yeah, well, it, it's probably scared of us.
Suzie, touching that isn't...
Let's chill out. If it's gonna come out, we'll hear it.
Yeah, you're right. We'll know it's there if it makes noise.
So, what happened next in your dream?
Um, so we were all riding on roller coasters. And you, Chris, and this boy was there. Chris's costume was kind of, I mean...
Was my coaster cool?
Um, yeah, it had like flames on it.
Yeah.
Honestly, the boy was strange, though.
Huh? Why?
He looked, he looked a little like Azrael? You know, Chris's brother, but not.
Yeah, I mean, he does kinda look like Chris's mom. Ouch. Huh? From, uh, what you just said, he would.
Right, it just makes me wonder why. In the end, I got so overwhelmed, I stopped questioning, questioning it. I ended up being in a large city with Chris. What was interesting is that Chris just... Chris just acted not like their normal self.
This dialogue is definitely different if you do Snowgrave.
They acted just like they do recently, I guess.
Huh, Chris seems normal recently to me.
And everything was, I guess it was... Almost like a game or something. Encountering enemies, finding treasures, stuff like that.
Never thought of it like that.
And then Chris, even though they kept looking at me... Like they wanted to say something. Everything that came out of their mouths sounded odd. Like it was on speaker or something.
Sounds like normal Chris to me.
Well, it wasn't. Something was weird.
I think Chris is just weird, period. Yeah, sometimes they mumble, sometimes they yell. But sometimes it's like, dude, I don't know why, but... For some reason, they're really, really... Good at flirting?
Huh? What makes you say that, Suzie?
Uh, never mind. Haven't you, like, seen them flirt with people?
With who?
Like, uh, enemies?
What enemies?
Dude, I don't know. I'm just thinking like, damn. I should get flirting lessons from them.
Oh, flirting lessons from Chris? Sounds fun.
Uh, I mean, you're also invited?
Am I that bad? Um, Suzie, I don't think Chris would teach me that.
Damn, guess it's just, guess it'll just be the three of us then.
Who's three?
Uh, you know, uh... Damn it, you know?
Um...
So there's this boy that goes to, uh, another school. And I wanted him to come to the festival, but, uh oh.
You were thinking of going together?
Yeah, but, you know, he can't go. Cause of like other school stuff.
Huh.
I mean, don't get any weird ideas or anything. He just doesn't really get included much, so...
What the heck? That's really sweet of you, Suzie.
So I noticed there's like... This photo of you and Chris on the wall?
Oh my gosh, that's so old, I forgot about it.
I didn't know you were like, um, close, I guess.
We, I mean, we. We're just neighbors, so, I mean... We just ended up seeing each other a lot, that's all.
Okay, but like, in the photo, you're like... Kinda like riding a Ferris wheel together.
Yeah, it was kinda just, you know, forced.
Oh. So riding a Ferris wheel together doesn't mean anything?
Um, maybe not if it's like just a forced thing.
Oh. Uh oh. I mean, yeah, obviously, I mean, it's just a stupid ride. So if, theoretically, if it was somebody else, it wouldn't...
I mean... Maybe if it's more about how the two people in the wheel feel? So maybe, even if it is forced, then...
Okay, cool. So, how did you feel back then?
Well, Chris was quiet and staring out the window. And suddenly out of nowhere, they shook the whole thing! And I screamed, and then they turned to me and smiled.
So is that good or bad?
Um, I don't remember. I was a kid.
So, uh, anyway, let me ask one more thing. Uh, about your dream.
Um, sure.
Was there any part with the... I mean, just the two of us and...
Well, in my dream... You did have this cute tail.
Huh? Uh, okay, well, uh... Sorry your dream was stupid and fake. With that part.
And then, what's wagging behind her?
Oh. Let's shut up for a while. Okay. Oh, look at them, they're holding each other.
He... Wait a sec.
Dude, stop making so much goddamn noise! You're supposed to be searching for clues, dumbass! Well, mission failed. Hey, uh, sorry about that, I...
Suzie, that guitar, you're...
Huh? Uh, should I, should I, uh, put it back?
Um, well... No. No, it's, I think you should play it.
Me? Uh, sure, sure, I can give it a shot. Let's, uh, just go somewhere else, though.
Um, okay.
Hmm, Suzie guitar? I'll be right there. This is the knight that's talking to us, right? It's gotta be. Well, back in. Hockey puck, looks like it would hurt. It did, ow! Oh. Violin, a flute, and microphone. They all look very expensive and very dented. I did lose 2 HP! Shelf in front are all the holiday-themed games and movies. At the back are all the scary games you never got to play. Des's bed, underneath are army rations, guitar picks, paintball gear, ice skates, and a badly traced drawing of a dragon. Aw. How to draw dragons. It's a computer. The monitor is unplugged. Oversized walk-in closet. It's covered in band posters and some handmade posters. For shows that may or may not have ever happened. It's a CD player. Underneath are tons of punk rock CDs and one still sealed ska CD. It's a box of odds and ends. Dig through? Yes. You dug through the box and found? Couple of burnt lighters, rusted multi-tool knives, expired rations, walkie-talkies, loose binoculars, a pair of shoes fit for hooves, violent comic books, paintballs, a cracked hockey mask, frayed yarn and buttons, your brother's retainer... Uh, what is that you're doing in there? And old mint cans with unique leaves inside them. Here's a lot. Hey, just so you know, me and Chris were in a band. So don't be surprised if I'm pretty good. Oops. Sure you wanna hear this?
Huh? Yeah, of course, I, I just always like listening to someone play.
Okay, then check this out. Dude, I actually kinda kicked ass with that one.
Can we get noncore?
Just for my fans. Shut up, that was a remix. Man, today's been awesome. Not to be weird or anything.
Um, it's, it's not weird at all. I, I really like hanging out with you too, Suzie.
Sweet. Maybe we could like, I don't know, hang out again tomorrow or something? Uh, unless you're busy?
Um, no, I, I'm not busy, it's just, tomorrow is, well, it's the festival, Suzie.
Oh, yeah, I...
Would you... Would you wanna go together?
I...
The lights?
Oh yes, someone had turned them off.
Um, hello, Mr. Dreamer?
I don't mean to interrupt your schoolwork, but... Is that a snack tray?
Um, yes, feel free to have some.
Don't mind if I do. Yum 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 yum. Phew, cleaning sure does work up an appetite. Figured I'd get in a bite before your mother's home.
Oh, well, um, there's no rush, you know? She has work. She's not going to be home for hours.
What do you mean? I just saw her outside the window. Oh my god, is... Oh my god, is, is Carol actually the knight?
Mom? Mom is... Suzie, I- Suzie, I'm sorry, I, I think you should-
Oh my god. Hello, Carol.
Mom, I-
You. Get your hands off that guitar. Hey, what's your-
She, she didn't know, Mom! I, I was the one that gave her the guitar, I, I told her to play it, I just, I, I just wanted to hear it again! And Suzie's not a bad person, Mom, I-
Noel. Kitchen, now.
Hey, listen, Noel didn't do anything wrong. It's my fault, I took the guitar and-
Leave. What? You are not welcome. Leave. And don't talk to my daughter again.
Hey, I can- Suzie, just, just go.
Well... Guess who's taking your daughter to the festival tomorrow, jerk?
Um, I'll be in the kitchen.
Asgore. If you're going to eat that snack tray, do it outside. Yes, Carol. Well, that went well. No reason to enter. Am I just meant to leave? Guess I should leave. You felt something like ice on your shoulder. My apology, apologies about just now, Chris. As you know, you are welcome here anytime. Well, that was awkward. The hell was up with her mom? Everything was going great until she stepped in. And the room dropped like five degrees. The code, Chris, we forgot about the code! Damn, it's all her fault! There, there, don't worry too hard about things. Carol is lovely once you get to know her. Uh, yeah, I bet. So what are you two up to now? Um, we were probably gonna go back to Chris's house. Ah, I see, home is where the heart is. May I offer either of you a cheesed cracker? You know what, sure. Delicious, aren't they, Chris? Yeah, actually, thanks! Ta ta for now, have a great day, Chris. Dude, we can't go back in there now. Her mom is totally watching us through the window. Did you need something, Chris? Ah, yes, Carol and I have been working together. She's been funding my flower store and in exchange... You know, it's funny, gardening, gardening was always my hobby. Never my job, so selling what I grow has been tough. Flowers are for people you love. Giving them away just seems natural, doesn't it? You okay? Oh, better than ever with the festival tomorrow! I'm expecting record sales for my flowers! With a bit of extra cash, I'll be back on my feet! And ready to serve my own snack platter for you and Azzy. There might even be some leftovers for your mother. Have a good one, Chris. Well... We agree that Carol is super sus, right? Hey, hey, Chris. I didn't wanna say it near your dad, but... I saw it. I saw it, in the guitar. There was a code for the shelter. Didn't get to write it down, but... Damn it, we were so close to something! Guess we just gotta try again tomorrow. Well, what the hell do we do now? Well, it's raining. Great, now it's raining. At least your house is close, let's go. Oh hell no. It's 12:25, bitch, I know it! At least we know where one of the codes is, oh, it's only one of three, that's right. Well... Chapter 5's Dark World is gonna be in the church. I think that much seems clear. Carol knows shit. Huh? Hey, the door's locked! Seriously? Ugh, if you don't have a key... Damn, well, her mom's doing her choir practice, right? Guess we can go to the church and bother her for it. Ugh. Says it's closed, but the lights are on inside. You do have a closed sign, you bitch! It's quiet inside, peeking, yes. Zigzag rug, flat-screen TV, regular-looking kitchen. It's a bit messy, but nothing special. Is papyrus even real? Knock, knock, knock. Milk is getting diluted. Don't just stand there, do something! Milk, you can see it going from 2% to 1%. I wonder if Onion is around now that it's raining? Let me save. Knock, knock, knock. Tada, you cad, this is the same dialogue. Hi. Don't wait, don't wait, especially the don't. Wait, don't, wait, don't. They don't want me to wait here for Onion. But now that you're not in the library... Libraby. Where's the libraby? It's down further south, isn't it? Libraby. No! Closed temporarily due to wet noises, or weather, okay, fine. Could go back into the, into the dark world if I wanted, but... I will not. Hi you! Splash, splash, rain is the best water, weather for puddles, I'm splashing out! Just kidding, I don't know where all the weathers, I don't know all the weathers, but I'm splashing out! Close. Temporarily hold on new patients due to rain-induced colds. Looks like the diner is full. Okay. Let's just continue. I can imagine your mom now. Chris, honey, can you teach Suzie how to drift? Oh, yeah, that's right, I need to go to the church. Church! Hmm. Door's locked, no one is inside. Well, let's uh, ask your mom for the key, I guess. Hope she doesn't mind us ruining our choir practice. Oh, is there already a dark world? You'll uh, get her, right? Yep. Chris, hey, Chris. I don't think they're having choir practice. That goddamn knight! Making one right where everyone can see! Chris, let's think logically, right? There's no way they can get out of there. Without us seeing them. If we just wait here, we'd be able to catch them leaving, right? But we aren't logical. You're damn right we aren't! Hey, you think you can scare us? We'll show you who really rules in the dark! Come on, Chris! I wasn't expecting a dark world this chapter, actually. Ooh. What's with this place? Kinda gives me the creeps. Let's go. The scent of glass and incense. A certain power steals within you. Dark Sanctuary Atrium. And that is where I'm gonna take a break. Yep. That's where we're stopping for now, that seems like a good point. Oh boy, things are gonna get real. Listen to that music. Uh, but yeah, thank you for watching. Uh, next episode, we go down the dark scary hallway with the weird windows. Bye!